City Councilman is now called to the board. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance and invitation, ladies and gentlemen. Councilman and host.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we come before you just saying thank you, Lord, for another day. We ask that you be in the midst, and God has sent a director's word. We know that you're able, and without you, we can do nothing. We're with you, we can do all things. We ask for your peace and your grace. We ask for all these blessings in your son, Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Moment assignments, please, for Beverly Valek, who cast away last week, a lifelong resident, her and her husband of the first district, and very good neighbors and upstanding citizens.
And also for Duran Moore and his family, and his wife, died at forty-eight years old. Who I grew up with.
Thank you.
Number two on the agenda, from March fourteenth, twenty-eleven. Meeting of the Hammond County Council is roll call vote.
Markovich.
Here.
Lasala.
Here.
Spitali.
Here.
Kalwinski.
Here.
Salinas.
Here.
Polo.
Here.
Opinkar.
Here.
Henosa.
Here.
Hicks.
Here. Let the record reflect, all nine are present. Number three on the agenda is reading of the amendments.
Mr. President.
Ms. President. Councilman Opinkar.
I'd like to make a motion except for minutes two-twenty-eight eleven.
Second. It's been motion by Councilman Opinkar, second by Councilman O'Gorman, so please. Uh, any discussion on the amendments? Any discussion on the amendments? Any discussion on the amendments? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any noes? Motion passed. Number four is approval of claims. Approval of claims.
Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
Move for approval of claims from February twenty-third to March nine, twenty-eleven, for council date, March fourteenth. Beginning with claims dated March four, twenty-eleven, ending with claims dated March nine, twenty-eleven. Starting with claim number nine zero four, claim one-one-seven-four, plus of ISO mode.
It's been motion by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilwoman Poland, that we approve claims dated from February twenty-eleven to March nine, twenty-eleven, for council date scheduled March fourteen, twenty-eleven. With claim starting nine oh four, ending in claim number eleven-seven-four. Is there any discussion on the claims? Any discussion on the claims?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
Amendment. An amendment to the claims list.
Councilman Markovich.
voucher number will be one-one-seven-five, hand a trophy shot, seventy-four dollars and seventeen cents. For some kind of plaques.
Seventy-four eleven, seventy-five. There's a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
It's been motion by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilwoman Poland, that we amend in claim eleven-seventy-five. Is it eleven-seventy-five, eleven-seventy-four?
Eleven-seventy-five.
Eleven-seventy-five. Eleven-seventy-five for seventy-four seventeen. Hand a trophy shot. Is there any discussion on the amendment? 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 Roll call vote on the amendments.
Markovich.
Yes.
Lasala.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Kalwinski. Salinas.
Yes.
Polo.
Yes.
Opinkar.
Yes.
Henosa.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Motion passes on the amendments. Now, roll call voting on claims as read. Claims as read. Roll call vote.
Markovich.
Yes.
Lasala.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Polo.
Yes.
Opinkar.
Yes.
Henosa.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes. Motion passes nine, February zero. Number five on the agenda is public hand, there are none. Number six is communications. Communications, number six. Councilwoman Poland, can you have some communications?
Yes, um, I would like a letter written to the engineering department regarding the area between one-hundred-and-sixty-fifth and one-hundred-and-sixty-seventh, that Councilman Hicks and I share the district boundaries with, um, that area needs an overlay. I would like that done this spring if possible, but we will share the cost on that. So I would like a letter to the engineering department regarding that.
Is there a motion on the floor, is there a second? Second. It's been motion by Councilwoman Poland, second by Councilman O'Gorman, that we send a letter to the engineering department, and in regards to one-hundred-and-sixty-fifth to one-hundred-and-sixty-seventh, for overlay in the twenty-eleven season of resurfacing from one-hundred-and-sixty-fifth to one-hundred-and-sixty-seventh, starting at the water department and ending by start-up folding out. Is there any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any noes? Motion passed. Communications, communications. Any other communications? Any other communications? Any other communications? Communications is now closed. Number seven is committee reports. Seven is committee reports.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman McWhistler.
Council is a whole, bringing out eleven-dash-seven.
Council is a whole, bringing out eleven-dash-seven. Any other committee reports? 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 Committee reports is now closed. Number eight on the agenda is ordinance is on third reader and final passage. Third reader and final passage.
Ordinance number eleven-dash-seven sponsored by cops on Kalwinski, and ordinance pending ordinance, verse three eighty-seven, and amendment ordinance eighty-nine sixty-one, also on the section one-seventeen point zero-three-three of the Hammond Municipal Code, as it contains to licensing requirements and restrictions for mobile caterer and itinerant restaurants and vendors in Hammond.
Clerk Golick, could you please read that eleven-seven in its entirety?
Whereas, section one-seventeen of the Hammond Code of ordinance regulates itinerant restaurants, itinerant vendors, and mobile caterers operating in the city of Hammond. And whereas such non-permanent sellers are regulated by the city and are required to obtain a license to operate in the city of Hammond. And whereas traveling vendors, food carts, food stands, food vendors, ice cream trucks, ice cream carts, and other providers, while beneficial to the community, do increase traffic, cause parking issues, compete with taxpaying businesses, and contribute to additional noise, congestion, and litter in residential areas. And whereas, mobile caterers and itinerant restaurants and itinerant vendors, who do not travel when stay stationary, are acting as permanent sellers and merchants, whose operations are better located in commercial zoning areas and permanent places of business. And whereas, it is the desire of the common council to place limitations on itinerant restaurants and vendors, as well as mobile caterers, to ensure that they are in fact operating as such, and not as permanent business locations, improperly operating in contradiction to zoning code and health laws. Now, therefore be it ordained by the common council of the city of Hammond, Indiana, that ordinance thirty-three eighty-seven and eighty-nine sixty-one be amended, and section one-seventeen point zero-three-three be now read as follows.
Councilman O'Gorman.
Section. Section one-seventeen point zero-three-three, itinerant restaurants and vendors, mobile caterers. A, any person, business, company, entity, organization, corporation, or partnership operating as an itinerant vendor, itinerant restaurant, or mobile eater, caterer, shall obtain and possess a valid business license as set forth in chapter one-nineteen of the Hammond Municipal Code. B, itinerant restaurants are for food and/or drink providers, who do not maintain a permanent place of business within the city of Hammond, who sell or offer to sell directly to the consumer. Itinerant vendors sell uncooked items, flowers, gifts, and other items directly to consumers. Both itinerant restaurants and itinerant vendors are intended to be seasonal or temporary in nature, and may not operate more than thirty days in any one calendar year. No itinerant restaurant or vendor is to operate within two-hundred feet from any intersection, or attempt any items, flowers, gifts, or attempt to sell food, drink, or other food items to passengers inside a vehicle. C, mobile caterers are individuals who serve food, drink, ice cream, ice pops, or other food items from self-contained food vending carts, such as ice cream trucks, or mobile self-contained food storage and preparation units. Such mobile caterers are to remain mobile when not serving customers, and are to not operate at a stationary or permanent location in the city of Hammond. Mobile caterers operating in residential districts are to operate without creating excessive noise or litter. D, no vendor is to operate on private or municipal property without the express written consent of the owner of that property. E, no vendor is to operate or conduct sales in any way that interferes with or prevents vehicular or pedestrian traffic. F, vendors who receive a license and violate the terms of this ordinance may have their license revoked as set forth in section one-nineteen of the Hammond Municipal Code. G, penalty, see section ten point nine-nine. Now be it further obtained that herein ordinances shall have full force and effect from and after passage.
Approval by the council, signed by the president thereof, and approval signed over there. Mr. Chairman.
Councilman McWhistler.
I move for final passage of eleven-dash-seven.
Second. It's been motion by Councilman McWhistler, second by Councilman Opinkar that we pass ordinance eleven-dash-seven.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman McWhistler.
I want to thank Clerk Golick for reading that in its entirety, I appreciate that. And again, just to reiterate, this is meant to work on traffic issues, lots of issues.
Councilman McWhistler, can you speak into the mic, please, because I can't hear you that good.
Sure. I want to thank Clerk Golick for reading the ordinance in its entirety, and just to reiterate, this is to address increased traffic issues that have been created by such vending, parking issues, and the fact that these vendors are actually competing with taxpaying businesses, and contribute to additional noise, congestion, and litter in residential areas. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman.
I'd like to, uh.
Councilman, um, Spitali, I'm sorry, trying to take my medication.
Mr. President, I'd like to amend, uh, page two, item B, where it says that they're not to operate more than thirty days in a calendar, one calendar year. I'd like to have that as fifteen days instead of thirty. I so move.
What's that? Can you identify that? Is that in B?
That's in B, yes.
B, and we would like to, uh.
Thirty days in any one calendar.
Take out thirty days and insert fifteen days. Is there a second amendment? There is a motion by Councilman Spitali, second by Councilman McWhistler, that we amend in fifteen and take out thirty. Is there any other discussion as it relates to, uh, section B of ordinance eleven-dash-seven?
Mr. President.
Councilman.
And I'm fifteen days, I've never heard of a vendor that's going to be limited to fifteen days. Usually, usually he's there all summer.
By the order, Councilman. Sorry, uh, Councilman Markovich interrupted you. Councilman O'Gorman, you have the floor.
Yeah, I can't, uh, I mean, uh, I've seen thirty days on this ordinance, but now fifteen days, I've never seen, uh, a vendor like that that's only going to be able to operate fifteen days. It might as well just not happen at all, just put zero days.
Any other discussion as it relates to eleven-dash-seven and the amendment from thirty days to fifteen days? Section B of ordinance eleven-dash-seven. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Roll call vote on the amendments.
Markovich.
Show.
Lasala.
Yes.
Spitali. Kalwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
No.
Polo.
Yes.
Opinkar.
Yes.
Henosa.
No.
Hicks.
No.
Motion passes, five in favor, and four noes. Now back to the original motion.
Mr. President.
Councilman, uh.
I got an amendment, uh, the clerk will bear with me, I got, uh, uh, some, something red here, so you can follow. Clerk Golick? Okay, I'd like to, I'd like to make an amendment, and this is going to amend out to fifteen days, um, on page two, under B. If you go down to where Councilman Spitali was talking about, I'd like to strike out, uh, more than thirty days in any one calendar. I'd like to make that, uh, not operate longer than May first through September thirtieth.
Second.
No, I'm not done yet. Uh, the next sentence says, uh, no, uh, itinerant restaurant or vendor is to operate within two-hundred feet. I'd like to strike out, operate within two-hundred feet from any intersection, strike that out. And then it goes on, uh, where it says attempt, I'd like to put to sell, in between attempt and any items, and then going down to C, I'd like to strike out, uh, in the middle of C, where on the right side it says such mobile caterers, uh, all the way to location in the city of Hammond, I'd like to, uh, strike that out, and put in, such mobile caterers are not to sell food items within one block or next to a grocery store or restaurant unless they have consent of the owner or manager of the property. Under D, I'd like to strike out, on the, uh, right side of D, it says express written. I'd like to strike that out and put, uh, consent of the owner or manager of the property, so I'm going to put in or manager, where it says of the owner, I want to put in or manager of the property. Under E, it says no vendor is to operate or conduct sales in any way that interferes with or prevents, uh, vehicular traffic, or more than seventy-five percent. I'd like to amend in, uh, where it says vehicular, put traffic in there, and then after or, put in more than seventy-five feet of pedestrian traffic. I so move.
It's been motion by Councilman O'Gorman, is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
It's been motion by Councilman O'Gorman, second by Councilman Salinas, that we amend in all of these new sections of this lovely ordinance eleven-dash-seven. Section C should read, such mobile characters are not to sell to food items within a block next to a grocery store or restaurant unless they have the consent of the owner or manager of that property. Section D, um, what was section D again, that you wanted to maybe?
Okay, let me repeat all of them.
Yeah, one more time.
Okay. Under, uh, under B, uh, towards the bottom on the right side, where it says, I'd like to strike out more than thirty days in any one calendar year, now it's fifteen days, uh, according to the amendment, I'd like to put on there, not operate longer than May first to September thirtieth. The next sentence goes on, uh, no itinerant restaurant or vendor is to operate, I'd like to strike out, operate within two-hundred feet from any intersection. Strike that out, and then it goes on, or attempt to, or attempt, after attempt, I'd like to put to sell, any items, flowers, it goes on, uh, and then down in C, in the middle of the sentence, on the right side, where it says such mobile caterers, I'd like to strike out that whole sentence all the way to the city of Hammond, and put in, such mobile caterers are not to sell food items within one block or next to grocery stores or restaurants unless they have the consent of the owner or manager of that property. And then under D, I'd like to strike out express written, I don't think, uh, they should have to put an express written in there, uh, as long as they got consent of the manager, and the police were to go in there, they can, uh, find out that you said it was okay. So under D, I'd like to take out express written, and it goes on at the end of the sentence, consent of the owner, after owner, I want to put or manager of that property. Under E, the sentence says no vendor is to operate or conduct sales in any way that interferes with or prevents vehicular traffic, I'd like to, uh, insert traffic under vehicular, uh, and then or, more than thirty feet of pedestrian traffic. And that's it.
Any discussion on the amendments?
Mr. President.
Councilman O'Gorman.
The guy asked in the meeting, uh, in the back, uh, I mean, I mean, I carry, I carry an iPhone, and I take pictures of everything. I got, I got a guy that goes around the Hesville with a cart, and I take pictures of everything. About the only mobile caterer that I see in my district is really across street from my district, across street, uh, by Freddy Steakhouse, over by the village where they sell the used clothes, uh, and I'm sure they have permission from that place to, uh, to go ahead, and he's got a little cart, I don't know what he sells, like.
Corn.
But they, what do they sell?
Corn.
They sell corn in a cup. Uh, most of these vendors that I think we're talking about, uh, uh, you know, with the city of Hammond being in fifty-nine percent minorities, I think this is going to target the, uh, minorities in the city of Hammond, uh, and where they mostly are, uh, these vendors are in the first district, uh, second district, and third district. Uh, I think this is, uh, this is a step in the wrong direction, uh, to go, uh, if anything, we should, uh, table this and, and discuss, I mean, there's no pictures of, of anything. I mean, they sell the corn, they sell the churros, I, I think we're targeting the Spanish vendors is what we're doing here.
Second. Any other discussion as it relates to the amendments?
Move table.
Second. It's been motion by Councilman Salinas, and second by Councilman O'Gorman, to table.
Just the other citizen. You made, you made the motion.
I made the motion. He wants to table it.
Did you table?
Yes, Councilman Salinas made the motion, Councilman O'Gorman, second. Motion to table. Roll call vote on the motion.
Markovich.
Yes.
Lasala.
No.
Spitali. Kalwinski.
No.
Salinas.
Yes.
Polo.
No.
Opinkar.
No.
Henosa.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Motion fails. Four yeses, five noes.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman McWhistler.
Call for the vote on the amendment, please.
It's been motion by Councilman McWhistler, second by Councilman Opinkar. Do you want to call for the vote?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
Uh, Mr. Chairman. Need that as.
So there's all discussions here.
Need that as, insert for changes to the amendments.
There's no call.
Um.
We'll call your point of order, then, Councilman McWhistler.
Point of order, sir.
What's your point of order?
That there is no discussion for a call for the vote.
That's correct.
Mr. President, I believe it's, uh, a call for the vote for the amendment.
Correct.
Correct. We're voting on the amendment?
Right.
Okay.
And amendment, Clerk Golick, so everyone's clear on that, is to.
Item B, strike. In item B, more than thirty days in, in any one calendar year, and insert longer than May one to September thirtieth. Also in that same paragraph, strike, operate within two-hundred feet from any intersection, and after the word attempt, add to sell. Item C, strike, such mobile caterers are to remain mobile when not serving customers, and are not to operate in a stationary or permanent location in the city of Hammond. Insert, such mobile caterers are not to sell food items within one block or next to grocery stores or restaurants unless they have the consent of the owner or manager of that property. Item D, strike, express written, and on the second sentence, after the word owner, and or manager of that property. Item E, after the word vehicular, and traffic, and after the word or, more than seventy-five feet of, seventy-five percent, excuse me, of pedestrian traffic.
Any other discussions on the amendments? Clerk, Clerk Golick, can you just read the insertions of the amendment, right? Inserted the language in it for the ordinance, right?
Yes, sir.
You made the motion to call for the vote, who seconded it?
Roll call vote on the amendment.
Markovich.
There's no discussion.
Clarification, just that we're voting on the amendment.
Markovich.
Yes.
Lasala.
No.
Spitali.
No.
Kalwinski.
No.
Salinas.
Yes.
Polo.
No.
Opinkar.
No.
Henosa.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Motion fails. Five noes, four yeses. Councilman McWhistler.
Call for the vote on the next amendment, those fifteen days instead of thirty.
So, the original amendment. It's been motion by Councilman McWhistler, there's a second, on the original amendment. Second by Councilman Opinkar. Any discussion?
Call for the vote.
Mr. Chairman.
Call for the vote.
You gotta give, you gotta give my opportunity here. Councilman.
The amendments of order, sir, are, there are no discussions for calling vote. Let's have a vote.
Who made the motion?
I did.
Who seconded?
I seconded.
You guys ain't going to have no dialogue on this ordinance, okay, whatever. Berger, can you clarify that to make sure that that's definitely?
I'm trying to look that up.
Mister Chairman.
Second. Yes.
Were there a lot of changes made to the original order?
Five few.
Just, did those, did those pass, do you know?
Yeah.
Well, I, I think what should happen in with all these changes, that it should be sent back to committee and have this, when all these changes re-typed and inserted in there, so everybody knows what's going on and then bring it back to final pass.
We already voted exactly for that. Where you been? Berger, are we clear on that?
I, I, you know, I, I don't believe it's debatable, but I, I have a.
So call for the vote on the original amendment.
Amendment.
I'm pretty sure that too, so I, I was just checking, but I'm pretty sure. Call for the vote, it's been motioned by Councilman McWhiskey, second by Councilman Opiker. For, uh, final passage, is it?
No, fifteen days instead of thirty.
The insertion of fifteen days versus thirty days to the amendment. So we're voting on the second amendment, because we just voted on one amendment, so we're voting on the second, am I correct, Clerk Golick?
No. I want the reverse order of the one, of Councilman Hennos, with all the changes was voted out.
Right.
They weren't changing from thirty days to fifteen days, passed by over five to four, you're back on, uh, it was the seven dash seven as amended, and the amendment was inserting fifteen days rather than thirty days.
Mister Chairman.
Councilman McWhiskey will call for the vote on the amendment.
Second.
You already made that motion, the second, and so, Berger, dig on. Roll call vote.
Markovich.
No.
Lasala.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
No.
Pola.
Yes.
Opiker.
Yes.
Henosa.
No.
Hicks.
No.
Motion passes, five in favor and one opposed.
President Hicks, that concludes the ordinances for final passage.
Thank you, Clerk Golick, after all that, got it done. All right. Next on the agenda is number nine, introduction of ordinances.
Item A, ordinance eleven dash eight sponsored by Councilman Markovich, Henosa, and Councilwoman Pola, and Councilman Hicks. And off, ordinance authorizing the city controller to transfer from one white item to another.
Councilman Henosa, can you take care of that for me? Mister Chair, Councilman Markovich.
Mister Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
Move for final passage to the, I'm sorry, first and second reading, referred to council as a whole, for the public hearing on April eleventh.
Second.
It's been motioned by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilwoman Pola, that we move eleven dash eight by first and second reading by title and refer to council as a whole, with a public hearing scheduled on three twenty-eight?
Four eleven.
Four eleven, eleven. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion passes.
Item B. Ordinance eleven dash nine sponsored by Councilman Opiker, and ordinance amending ordinance ninety sixty, eighty-three twenty-seven, amended ordinance eighty-five seventy, amended ordinance eighty-six oh three, amended ordinance eighty-six sixty-six, and amended ordinance eighty-seven hundred, also known as section ninety-six point one five two of the Hammond Municipal Code, as it pertains to rental registration in the city of Hammond and student housing.
Mister President.
Councilman Opiker.
Basically what this, uh, ordinance is stating, uh, it's protecting the, uh, kids that come in, go s- go to school that are from other countries, um, they live in these houses, one, two, three, there could be up to eight of them, and it's protecting them from the liv- uh, bad living conditions that slum landlords might create, move them in the cutouts and this and that, so that's what it's protecting. I'd like that the first and final reading, or first and second reading, put in council as a whole.
Second. It's been motioned by Councilman Opiker, second by Councilman McWhiskey, that we move by first and second reading by title, ordinance eleven dash nine, and refer to council as a whole. Is there any discussion on eleven dash nine? Eleven dash nine. Any discussion on eleven dash nine? Any discussion on eleven dash nine? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion passes.
Item C, ordinance eleven dash ten sponsored by Councilman Hicks, and ordinance requiring contractors on city construction contracts to employ residents of the city of Hammond.
Mister President.
Councilman Henosa.
Um, motion for first and second reading of the eleven dash ten, uh, to be placed in council as a whole.
Second.
It's been motioned by Councilman Henosa, second by Councilwoman Pola, that we refer eleven dash ten, first and second reading by title and refer to council as a whole. Is there any discussion on eleven dash ten? Any discussion on eleven dash ten? Any discussion on eleven dash ten? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion passes.
Item A, ordinance eleven dash eleven sponsored by Councilman Hicks, and ordinance prohibit the storage of vehicles on lots which were formerly used car lots.
Mister President.
Councilman Henosa.
I move for, uh, first and second reading of eleven, eleven, and to be placed in council as a whole.
Second.
It's been motioned by Councilman Henosa, second by Councilwoman Pola, that we move eleven dash eleven by first and second reading by title and refer to it as council as a whole, with the committee being scheduled for our next council meeting. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion passes.
President Hicks, that concludes the introduction of ordinances.
Thank you, Clerk Golick, number ten on the agenda is resolutions, resolutions.
Item A, resolution eleven R zero five sponsored by Councilman Markovich. A resolution of the common council of the city of Hammond, Indiana, supporting the right of all workers to unionize.
Mister Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
Uh, move for final passage in adoption of the resolution eleven dash zero five.
Second.
Mister Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
Uh, would like to read it at this time, seeing how Council, um, City Clerk Golick had the sore throat, and I'm getting one. Resolution of the common council of the city of Hammond, Indiana, supporting the right of all workers to unionize. Whereas the rights of our citizens to unionize, to affect working conditions, wages and benefits is an important right. And whereas the right of workers to organize and form unions in order to be effective in negotiating conditions unemployment, wages and benefits has led to the growth and success of the middle class of the United States. And whereas the history of the labor movement in the United States has been responsible for the child labor law, the forty-hour week, overtime requirements, and other benefits of the working class. And whereas there is a current political movement to restrict the rights of laborers to participate in a union and to limit the ability of a union to collect dues. And whereas there are those elected positions in the state of Indiana that are pledged to the destruction of the effectiveness of unions either by prohibiting payroll deductions for union dues, or outright prohibition of unions in the public sector. And whereas in twenty-eleven Indiana State Legislature, the House Bill fourteen sixty-eight is an example of the attack on working people in the state of Indiana. Therefore, it be resolved by a common council of the city of Hammond, that a policy position be clearly stated by the common council that all citizens of Hammond, whether in private employment or the public sector, shall have the right to organize and participate in a union. That the Indiana State Legislature should not attempt to pass any law that limits or restricts the rights of union and union activity. And so-called right-to-work legislation should not be passed, specifically House Bill fourteen sixty-eight should be defeated. That the legislators in Northwest Indiana should be encouraged to avoid supporting any decision by the state legislature that adversely impacts unions in the state of Indiana. This legislative body belief has sensed the Great Depression in the nineteen thirties, the growth of the middle class has been directly tied to an increase in wages for the working class. The growth of unions and its success caused an increase in wages for all Americans, and even those who were not in the union. The undermining of unions by any means is detrimental to the middle class and the result of the increase of families living at the poverty level. I so move.
Mister President.
Councilman Henosa.
Can you add me as a sponsor?
Add me as well. Would everybody on the council like to be added as a sponsor, yes, or?
Yes.
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 Please insert all the names of the council members that are present here at the meeting for this order. Is there any other discussion on the resolution? Any other discussion on the resolution? Roll call vote on the resolution.
Markovich.
Yes.
Lasala.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Salinas. Pola.
Yes.
Opiker.
Yes.
Henosa.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes, motion passes, eight in favor and one absent.
President Hicks, that completes the reading of the resolutions.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. Next on the agenda is eleven, new enough in his business, new and uninexpensive. New enough in his business.
Mister Chairman.
Councilman McWhiskey.
It was announced in Congress that, um, Animal Control and at the animal shelter, I believe on fifty-one hundred block of Columbia, will, um, do an unveiling of a sign, a new sign, on Thursday, the seventeenth of March at two P M. And the sign is a result of, uh, Joanne Matovitch, late councilwoman at large, and her passion to, uh, improve the status of, uh, all the animals at Animal Control. And she fought hard to put this in motion before her demise. And we're carrying, I believe, Councilman Henosa carrying the ball and share the funding out to Animal Control. And Animal Control, with the administration put up the rest of the dollars to put up a sign, a new sign at Animal Control, um, Joanne Matovitch, late councilwoman at large. Thank you. Uh, so I'm inviting actually the public to attend the ceremony on Thursday, the seventeenth, at two P M at Animal Control, for the unveiling of the new sign. Thank you.
Any other, uh, new enough in his business?
Mister President.
Councilman Henosa.
Uh, I'd like to address a letter that, uh, we have here from, uh, Chief Brian Miller. Uh, last council meeting, we had the, uh, uh, Mister Tony Andrade that spoke on the microphone about not getting police protection at his home. Uh, so we, uh, sent a letter to, uh, the chief, and this is the response from the chief. Councilman Henosa, I received your letter about the nine eleven calls made by the residents at sixty-seven thirteen Arkansas Avenue. I respectfully dispute the claims made by Mister Andrade that we did not respond to his calls for assistance. In particular, Mister Andrade made reference to his call to seventeen eleven that he made to the Hammond Police Department, nine-one-one center, concerning a man with a gun arguing with fifteen, with five male subjects. He stated that the police officers were not dispatched and never arrived. I have the radio dispatch tickets that clearly indicate Officer Frank Eggers was dispatched to the call at six oh two and arrived five minutes later at six oh seven P M. In addition, Sergeant Hunter was also dispatched and arrived after Eggers. Both officers searched the area for the suspects without success, and then cleared the call. Shortly thereafter, Mister Andrade called the police dispatch center and complained that he never saw police officers. Sergeant Hunter was again dispatched and he went to the Andrade household to personally explain that he did respond to Andrade's call for service. I found nothing in our records that would indicate anyone refusing police service to the Andrade family. If you have further questions, please contact me. Sincerely, uh, Chief Brian Miller. I had a meeting with, uh, Chief Doherty, because, uh, Chief Miller was on, on vacation. And, uh, all indications are there that, that the Hammond Police Department takes all calls very seriously, uh, no matter what they are. Uh, a lot of these calls, I believe there's a, I received a, I'll, I'll give the council copies of these, uh, this paperwork, there was thirty-eight police calls to the Andrade's home. Uh, out of those thirty-eight calls, I know one of them was, uh, that his house was ransacked. But, uh, what a coincidence that his house was ransacked, but nothing was stolen, that his house was ransacked. Also, we find out that Mister Tony Andrade, the father, is a Satan disciple out of Chicago, they call him T-Bone. Uh, and somebody, uh, last week sent me an anonymous letter, uh, and I'll, I'll supply it to the council and, and the newspaper, that, uh, it's a plea bargain, he was, uh, uh, convicted in two thousand and one for counterfeit bills. And in two thousand and two, he plea bargained, uh, and received, uh, eight months in prison for the counterfeit bills. When Mister Andrade did move into the neighborhood, uh, like I said, I took his calls very seriously, I did visit Mister Andrade and, and called him, uh, numerous times about a lot of things that were happening in his house, about the police shining the lights in his house. Uh, so I did take it very serious, and I started to work with Mister Andrade until I just started receiving, uh, or, or started hearing too many lies. I caught Mister Andrade in too many lies, and then after the lies, he would say, well, let me level with you. Well, that's not what happened, that's not what it is, this is what, this is what happened. When it was just too many lies, I said, you know what, now it's time to distance myself from Mister Andrade. And, uh, let the, uh, now it's a police matter, so Mister Andrade can deal with the police, I will have nothing to do with Mister Andrade, uh, because of, uh, his background, uh, and, uh, everything, all the lies that, all the lies that he told me. So, uh, Mister Andrade can deal with the police, not Chico Henosa. I know there's times up here that, uh, a lot of the councilmen receive phone calls, and, uh, the councilmen sometimes don't return phone calls. There's some councilmen that don't return no phone calls. Well, you know what, on election day, you go to their house and, uh, you know, or, if, if they don't answer and they still don't call you, then you have another, uh, another alternative, and that's to vote them out of office. Now, this councilman, most of the time, I might miss some, that, uh, fall through the cracks there, but most of the time, I do call people back. But if, uh, if you receive phone, if you receive phone calls as a councilman, and if you don't want to call them back, you don't have to call them back, but they're gonna vote you out of office. I did talk to Mister Andrade numerous times, uh, but like I said, once I started noticing, noticing too many lies and, and, and found out about all this background, I said, no more, I'm not gonna talk to Mister Andrade no more, let him deal with the police. And Mister President, I have one more. Uh, on a different subject, I'd like to send a letter to engineering, uh, to clean the berm on the west end of Klein Avenue that borders Tennessee, from the sixty-three hundred block to the sixty-eight hundred block of Tennessee. Uh, the, the berm and the hill coming off of Klein Avenue onto our backyards of Tennessee has, uh, trees growing. Uh, and all these trees, the roots are grown into the berm, and all this water is supposed to go into a retention pond on the sixty-eight hundred block of Tennessee. And it needs to be checked out and cleaned out, uh, as soon as possible, uh, because we have been, uh, we have had a lot of floods over there with, uh, our basements flooding, uh, a lot of times, so, uh, I so move on the motion. because we have had a lot of floods over there with our basements flooding a lot of times. So I so move on motion.
Good motion by Councilman Anahosa. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Pollock that we sent a letter in regards to cleaning by the burn. Is there any other discussion on the motion? Any other discussion? Any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Any nays? Motion passes. Like a letter sent to Indiana Department of Transportation as it relates to the bridge Michigan Avenue jacks you to right underneath Kennedy Avenue. As you're going towards the area, there is a lot of debris, bottles, cans, paper, and it's going to be cleaned up around there. So that is my request that they have someone from Indat who can clean that up immediately. I so move.
Second.
Good motion by me, second by Councilwoman Pollock. Is there any discussion of the letter being sent to Indat to clean up? Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Any nays? Motion passes. New and unfinished business, new and unfinished business.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Pollock.
I too would like a letter sent to Indat requesting the wall be repaired at one hundred and seventy-seventh and eighty-ninety-four. There's been a huge hole in this, in the wall along eighty-ninety-four. It's been close to a year and it's yet to be repaired. Kids are playing around in this area and it's quite a nice door too, and it's very dangerous. They are aware of it and we were promised some work, I believe, in January, and that has not been done.
Is there a second?
Second.
Good motion by Councilwoman Pollock, second by Councilman Anahosa that we sent a letter to Indat about one hundred and seventy-seven and eighty-ninety-four about the wall being replaced or fixed immediately. It's a hazard and it's been in deplorable condition for over a year, and she would like to have that fixed immediately. Is there any other discussion on the wall? Any other discussion on the wall? Any other discussion on the wall? All in favor signify by saying aye. Any nays? Motion passes. Like a letter sent to Judge Harton's office in regards to picking up tires for the sixty-three hundred block of Jefferson and Madison. There are about sixteen tires in the alley that need to be picked up. I so move.
Second.
It's been motion by me, Councilman Hicks, and second by Councilman Anahosa that we sent a letter to Judge Harton requesting they clean up the alley between the sixty-three hundred block of Jefferson and Madison for the tires. Is there any discussion on the motion? Any discussion on the motion? Any discussion on the motion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Any nays? Motion passes. New and unfinished business, new and unfinished business.
Chair.
Councilman Markovich.
In the past couple of weeks, I've been trying to get some information on the spending in the city of Hammond. It seems like every time I make a request, it's not happening and there's excuses and so forth. So for the record here tonight, for new and unfinished business, I'm making a request for public records in the discussion I had with Mr. Lenny, our controller, pursuant to IC five dash fourteen dash three dash one. That Councilman Markovich dated requests is March fourteen eleven, seven thirty P M city council meeting. In stating these discussions in the caucus, I am requesting a listing and copy of the first sheet stating the title of any and all reports that the city has for recording all city expenditures and any and all reports that the city comptroller's office generates. I'm making this request to the city comptroller's office, the law department, or wherever office these reports are entitled to. The department where the record is located is, I believe, the city comptroller's office or law department. I'm being told now all of a sudden that records I have received in the past are no longer available. They're saying that they don't have the programs to generate those records. And according to Mr. Control, Mr. Lenny stated in the caucus that he has no needs for those records anymore, so he does not solicit that program, that it doesn't cost too much money. And I asked him, he said about two thousand dollars. So I would request that in the future, if I would get these records, that this council comes up with the money and get this program generated so we can get the spending of all city finances. This is something that we had in the past. When I requested that before back in September, he gave me a stack of papers that were not in chronological order. They were not totaled or itemized. It was just, this is what we have, that's it. Whereas the report that I gave him at the last Board of Works meeting, I gave him a copy of. I asked him when he became city comptroller. He said, "On January first of twenty oh nine." I gave him a copy of the report listed by vendors dated one sixteen oh nine. That was the last time I received that report, and now all of a sudden it doesn't exist. So I'm requesting all the reports that the city comptroller's office generates, a copy of the first sheet, saying what it is, because nobody knows what reports are generated. And when I do ask for a report that was generated in the past, it's no longer available. So the only way to find out what records are available, I need to request a copy of them. And I'm not asking for, you know, five hundred sheets. I'm just asking a copy of the first page. So show me what information is available. And I'm making that request, and I'm making it here as a council meeting. We're doing unfinished business, and it could be presented to the clerk for official records, and he can turn you the copy to the city comptroller. Thank you.
Good motion by Councilman Markovich. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Anahosa that the letter, I guess, went to the city comptroller requesting records, the first sheet of the county.
Mr. Chairman, point of clarification. It's not, I'm not requesting the letter. I filled out the public request form.
Okay, what is it you want, councilman?
Well, it's listed here, and I explained it.
Okay, get out a copy so I can read them.
I just did it.
Yeah, okay, a listing of a copy of the first sheet stating the title of any and all reports that the city has for recording all city expenditures and any and all reports that the city comptroller's office generates. Got a broad word.
Hey, it's not broad. I want to know what kind of reports are available. That's the only way I can do it. I ask for a specific one, all of a sudden it's not available. If we need to spend money to get the reports, then spend the money to get the reports.
Okay, we have a control in the audience. Good to see you, Mr. Comptroller. Always a pleasure. Councilman Markovich? Councilman Markovich is requesting some items here. Can you understand what he's requesting?
Yes, I would agree, Mr. President. That request is extremely broad. This council pays me a large sum of money as a salary every year. You pay me that because I have a master's degree, because I have a CPA designation. If you really want me to spend hours generating paperwork at the pleasure of one of your councilmen, so that you can just review it for the sake of reviewing it, you're more than welcome to, and I'm more than happy to fill that request. But I can assure you that it would not be the best use of my time, my experience, and my expertise.
What is it? And Councilman Markovich, I'm just trying to, I certainly want to help you because you are one of my colleagues, and you sometimes vote in favor of some of the things that I would like to see done in the city. So in regards to that, I would definitely like to know, what exactly are you requesting?
Mr. Chairman, he has a copy of the report. Like I said, it's been being danced around since September. The last Board of Works meeting, I presented a copy of a report that I received every year in the past. But once we became comptroller, I got a copy of the report the first time, and now all of a sudden it's not available. So it was available when he was the comptroller, when he took office. Now all of a sudden it's not available. So I want a list of any and all reports that the comptroller's office generates. And you know what? It's not a request. It's not a letter. It's a public record through the state board of accounts in the state of Indiana requesting information. I don't care how many master's degrees he has or anything else and what his time is, you know, but he has time to do other things, and I won't get into that right now at this point. I want the information on the chairman of the finance committee. We have a problem with finances here. There's no accountability, and all it is is saying, "How much are we spending per vendor?" Now, I don't know what the problem is.
You want the vendor's list?
You know what? He knows what I want, so I want the vendor's list, yes, with spending year to date.
Okay, we have that in our office. I can give you that.
Well, I want to see that. I'm requesting it from him.
Point well taken.
They can do that. That's all. It has nothing to do with a letter, but I'm making a formal request. He has, he knows the procedure.
So you want us to vote in favor?
No, you don't have to vote for nothing. I'm doing an un-unfinished business. I'm presenting this request for the public records, and it's here at a public meeting, and I'm making that request.
Clerk Gollit, can you?
I went to the last two Board of Works meetings, and it's going on deaf ears. I'm being told at the last Board of Works meeting, he's complying with it. I asked the secretary today, let me finish, please. I asked my secretary today to go down to comptroller's office and get the reports. He wasn't around. He wasn't available. The reports weren't there. We're going on in two weeks already. The reports still aren't there. I want the reports. It has nothing to do, voting on a request. This is legal document. It's per state statute five fourteen three dash one. He knows the procedure. He knows what he has to do. Now, he can't come back and say, "We don't have any computer reports." Well, I'm listening, asking for a copy of every doggone report that is generated. And I'll decide whether it takes care of my needs or not. That's all it is. I don't care how much time it takes.
Well taken, clerk. I mean, Councilman Markovich, we understand what you request. It's a public record that he's requesting. No need to vote on that. Just wanted to make that public record and part of a managed.
Thank you.
It has been put in the men's, and point well taken. Thank you, Councilman Markovich. Any other new and unfinished business? Any other?
Mr. President.
Councilman Anahosa.
Just some information. I know we just had a lot of snow throughout this winter, and of course, one of them was a major snow. And now that all the snow has melted, of course, there's cleanup all over the city, all over the country, all over the country. There's just garbage everywhere. There's only so much that the city employees can do. Now, myself, I, this is something I do every year. I get together. I have this little organization called Keep Hesville Beautiful. And we put on T-shirts, and we go out and clean the intersections by one hundred and sixty-ninth. So if, something new that I'll be having on the internet is W W W dot ChicoHinoosa dot com. I'll be putting it out there when we're going to have the spring cleanups. And also, something that we've been doing for, I believe, two, three years, is putting dumpsters throughout the district in Hesville and the sixth district. Dumpsters will be placed from April twenty-first to the twenty-sixth. And I did ask my, I know we have Jake Jacobs here filming the council meeting. And I believe if you have a four G phone, that you can go on to gohammon.tv, not gohammon dot com, but gohammon TV and see the council meeting live. But I asked my daughters to look it up, but they said they couldn't see it, that there was nothing there. I don't know if it's something that's pre-recorded. We're going to see it later. Two weeks. Oh, and you're going to see it in two weeks. Okay, so it's not live. Something I did do is I ordered Comcast, I believe on the twenty-first, they're going to come install on Comcast. I think it's a lot easier than trying to find it on a phone and having a little screen. I mean, you can go on your internet, but it's much easier to turn on your TV. And especially if you've got Comcast, I'm sure if we make a change, a lot of people will be switching back to Comcast. I mean, I believe thirty percent of Hammond has Comcast. But I think a lot more people that are interested in what's going on in the city of Hammond might switch to Comcast just because you can just turn on the TV, put on the surf channel, and boom, you got the council meeting live. So I thought we were going to look at the live, but I guess not. We're going to have to wait two weeks. It's going to re-broadcast, and we'll see it in two weeks. But something is better than nothing.
Mr. Chairman. Councilman Markovich. Seeing how we don't have a live broadcast here, and we're going to have to take delay of two weeks and possible editing. When they do play this thing here, we're having a public hearing on the eleventh, and we're trying to get live cable here of the city council meetings. Not only will it just be the council meetings, but by upgrading our system into new digital technology, funding is being requested to go ahead and be taken care of. Not only will it take care of the council meetings, but some other organizations will love to do something as far as representing the city. They can also tie into that and arrange this to be made. We have an area career center just spent two million dollars remodeling the auto repair shop at the old Hammond Tech School. Two million dollars for video and audio taking and conduction of meetings for the kids, so they're learning that. What a wonderful thing if these kids could come here and operate the camera and see live firsthand telecommunications of the city council meetings. Not only would they learn, but they would be telling all people and showing them the city of Hammond. Now, there are some councilmen and women that say, "Well, we don't need it because only thirty percent of the people have Comcast cable." Well, I wonder if those thirty percent would be willing to go and vote for any councilman or councilperson that doesn't want to put these meetings online, that they take their thirty percent vote in an election time. Don't vote for those persons, because even though they are only thirty percent, I bet you pretty damn well that as a councilwoman or a councilperson, they would like to have that thirty percent of the vote. So seeing how this is becoming a political football, and everybody wants to keep prolonging it, well, then I might as well wave to the internet when it comes on in two weeks and say, "Hey, you could have been watching it live." Just like Mr. Stoya stated in the last council meeting, he'd like to see the things, you know, live on public television. And it's not a matter of whether it's WOW or Dish or whatever, but if we go back to nineteen eighty-eight, when United Cable Television was the first one to step in the plate, paid all the money and ran all the lines and all the cables on all the telephone calls so we could have cable. And since that time, it was bought by other cable companies. Now, with the new technology, an upgrade is needed of roughly seventy-one thousand dollars. And councilmen and women are trying to go ahead and bring those back to the individuals throughout the city live. And there seems to be a lot of stumbling and a lot of excuses and a lot of reasons why we can't. But seeing how I have to be kept in tune, like somebody stated recently, that's enough said for tonight, and then we have another council meeting coming, and we have elections coming. And you know what? Once this thing's on there, just go ahead and start calling your councilperson to call. You'd like to see this cable live and not have to wait two weeks where it would be edited and then go down the internet. Now, I do know that visiting the fire departments, that that was one of the things that they like to watch on Monday nights. Now, everybody says, let me finish.
Good morning, councilman. What does they like to watch?
Oh, the city council meetings when they are live. They like to sit there and watch the meetings because they can seek a transparency. They all can't come here when there's a council meeting when the budget's being paid in care of. But like I was at one of the fire department stations the other day, what a wonderful thing for six to nine firemen sitting there together, looking at a nineteen-inch little thing, sitting hand in hand and watching it on the internet. Wonderful. I mean, that's frigging unity and togetherness at the fire station. Whereas if we had these live and they have these new plasma thirty-two, forty-eight, fifty-two inch screen TVs that they can sit back and watch it, and they don't have to crowd each other, and they can watch the city council meetings live. And what has happened in the past, when individuals throughout the city have been watching this, they got so doggone mad during the council meeting that they left home and they came here and they signed into the public expression and give their views. And that's what we like. We like your input, live, not two weeks later on. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Councilman Anahosa.
Over to my right. I don't think the camera caught it, but the Pony Express delivered a communication that the next council meeting, which is, I believe, the twenty-eighth of March, should be live. We'll find out. And that this meeting that was taped tonight will be aired within forty-eight hours. So that's like Wednesday after ten o'clock, or maybe by Thursday. So I welcome that. We'll go from there.
Well, I certainly want to say that any avenues or resources that are available to the public in regards to council meetings are always welcome. We were elected to do a job and serve the community and our city, and so I think they would be interested in knowing what was going on in the council chamber. And I'm committed to getting that point across. That's why I started my own radio show, W J O B, to get the point across. It's going to be a very interesting election, and there will be some issues that will come up in discussion. And I'm sure they will be requesting information from me on W J O B as well. So we'll get the message out. So election. Any other new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Pollock.
There's not a day that goes by in the fourth district that I don't get questioned by my constituents when we're going to be back on TV. They miss watching the meetings. A lot of my constituents do not have a computer. They like to turn on a TV and watch the. They like to turn on the TV and watch the meetings, and keep up with what's going on, and the main reason is transparency. People need to know what's going on at these meetings. Not everyone wants to go out in the evening, or not able to get out, and that's been a constant question the whole time I have been in office. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Councilwoman Paul. Is there any other new and unfinished business? Any other unfinished business? Any other new and unfinished business?
Just have one other thing, 3rd District, need to clean up this from April 11th to the 17th, 2011. And dumpsters will be placed in the following locations, the corner of Portobro and Columbia Avenue, the corner of Wallace Road and Highland Street, the corner of Howard Avenue and Moore Street, the corner of Harrison Park and Lyman Avenue, the tennis courts, corner of Glendale Parkway, vacant lot located at 5618 Walter Avenue, corner of Cook Avenue and 165th Street, along railroad tracks there, block shelter, corner of May Street and Carroll. Let's make our environment safe and clean. Yours truly, 3rd District Councilman Anthony W. Hayes. Any other new and unfinished business? Any other new and unfinished business? New and unfinished business as now closed. First of the, Mr. Speakers tonight is Lou Leon Gaimo.
Gaimo. Leon Gaimo, 1545 Lake Avenue, Hammond. Just had a comment as far as proposal ordinance 11-6, ordinance pending ordinance 5085 on instruction 113.41 of the Hammond Municipal Code. Looking at the original 113.41 states, no garage sales to be permitted from the same parcel real estate more than two days per month in any 30-day period. Now, I've been talking to different councilmen, I realize that that's a concern, because there are other issues that are being brought up there, that don't seem to be addressed under the present code, and that is things like congestion, people posting signs on public property, things like that, never-ending yard sales. I think that those are legitimate concerns, but my concern about this is the way, the requirement for a person to get a permit to actually use their own backyard. I think the idea of requiring someone to get a permit to use their own property is a slippery slope we don't really want to go down. I mean, if you extrapolate that kind of thing out, I mean, we could be doing the same thing in five or 10 years, where somebody wants to have a barbecue, somebody wants to have a backyard pool party for their kids. I mean, the idea that a person's property is sacred, and their use of that property should be up to them, should be protected. I think we have to be real careful when we start requiring people to ask the permission of local government to use their own property. Now, I can realize that the idea of them running yard sales and that kind of thing is a concern. I think the idea that maybe we should act, we should track yard sales is fine, I think that somebody that's running a continuous yard sale or yard sale every other week, that can become a public nuisance. The same way as if someone has a backyard party, and it goes on until 3:00 in the morning, and they're playing music becomes a public nuisance, and I think that there's code that could be written to address that. But to require people to get a permit from local government to use their own property is a slippery slope, and I think it sets a dangerous precedent. There's a lot of people in this country that are really getting tired of the government micro-managing their lives, and when a community comes out with those things like this, telling them that they can't even use their own backyard unless they give local governments permission, I think this is just one more, this is just one more incentive for people to start looking to live elsewhere. And again, I think that we need to be real careful when we consider this. I think there are ways we can address these problems, things like, let's say for an example, a person has to report to the city that they're arguing to conduct a yard sale, notification to the city, that's fine, I think that if we track these things, that's fine, if we limit how many we could have, that's fine, but the thing is, when you start telling somebody they have to get the government's permission to use their own property, this really is a dangerous precedent for saying. Okay, thanks.
Thank you, sir. Your opinion is very valid. James O.
Well, he just stated about everything that I wanted to say, and what I'd like to bring forth is, if people have to come down to get a permit, there's going to be a few people that cannot, that might be handicapped, or a woman that might want to have a yard sale at the end of the week, and they've only got one child, and her husband's got it at work, she ain't available to meet that. And to limit it to one time a year is not enough, because there's going to be some people that's got children, that are going to sell, want to sell in the springtime, their clothes that the kids aren't going to be able to wear this coming fall, so they might want to have two yard sales a year, to have, sell their winter clothes, and then later that year, sell their summer clothes. Because that's the way they buy their children's clothes for school. So, just limit it to one time a year is going to make it bad. And as the frequency of congestion, traffic, well, like he said, it's, you know, when somebody has a graduation party, or pool party, or whatever, or, you know, it's kind of bad to say you're going to limit it to one time a year. So, thank you for listening.
Thank you. Carolyn Jackson.
Good evening, Carolyn Jackson, 6400 Lockwood Forest Avenue. Today I had the opportunity of going over to Menards. It is a fabulous store, it was just awesome inside. But that, for me, that didn't last long, because as I was walking through the store, I talked to several other people that were employed there, and what was really disturbing to me was to hear that someone had moved from out of town here to get a job working at Menards. They were so unfamiliar with the area, that they moved to Puyallup Forest, Illinois, because they thought that that was very close to Hammond, Indiana. And just this morning, I was at Strack and Bend Hill, and I was speaking to one of 3rd District residents, and she informed me how her husband was looking for a job, had been out of work for several, for a year or more, a son as well, and both of them had applied for a job at Menards. And to hire someone to come from out of town, when you've got people right here who so desperately need a job, it's just totally not acceptable, as far as I'm concerned. I don't know about you all, but as far as I'm concerned, I was angry. And the reason why is because when we contracted to get Menards the space and everything that they needed to, what, more than quadruple the size of that facility, and then they go out and hire people from out of town, when we've got people right here in our community who were looked over for a job, it's unacceptable. Then to talk, then the other one, other issue that I have, is with this yard, with this yard sale business. If I'm paying an exorbitant rate of taxes on my property, or mortgage, and everything else, I think it's ludicrous to even think of coming up with an extra charge for me to pay to have a yard sale. If you've ever done a yard sale here in Hammond, you know, you surely don't earn a lot of money for being out there all day, selling your children's clothes that are too small, or whatever you're selling. Then they expect us to pay another fee. I think it's ridiculous. Cut spending elsewhere so that you won't have to think of things like that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Jackson, point well taken. I will be giving a call to Menards tomorrow. Next speaker is Alfredo Franco.
My name is Alfredo Franco, I am a resident of the 6th District, and I'm currently a student at Bloomington. And there's been a lot of outrage, especially in Bloomington, about a Senate bill of 590. And I'm here to say to the council that this is really a financial issue, that this unfunded mandate can be a really big issue for the police force, for the city, because you have to train police officers to handle this type of situation, because in the bill, it says, pretty much suspicious, they can demand to see papers or documentation to confirm that you are a citizen of the United States. Now, I don't know about you, I would be really offended if that happened to me, especially, it depends on how it is handled, too. There can also be suits against the state or the city. And it's also, in Indianapolis, there's a lot of conventions I go through there, and I know for a fact there'd be boycotts on conventions for Indiana, and I've grown up in Indiana my whole life, and it's, it just kind of sickens me that this kind of thing is being pushed through legislation. It's like, this is where I live, you know? It's just not right.
Thank you. I'm not too familiar with that wheel, but I'm now, I'm pulled up on my computer. Thank you. Last speaker is George Story.
Yeah, George Story. Just wanted to touch on a couple things, just a kid in mind that maybe overlooked, and so reason I'm up here, not to hear myself talk, believe it or not. I concur with Leon here about being nitpicky to death, I mean, some of this stuff's really overkill, and it just seems to be something that's a perennial problem with this council, I mean, not just this council, maybe all councils, but it is an election year. It's almost like the Ray, Sugar Ray Robinson strategy of coming on real strong in the last part of the round, scored the points with the judges, so it looks like you're dominating the fight in Toronto. But, you know, it's going to get to the point where, excuse me, you've got to get permission to have, what do you call it, a cookout in your backyard, or a yard sale. I think that, I mean, I understand there's the other side to the issue, but, anyway, what could certainly be more, and I don't know how much of this is electioneering, because it's an election year, what, thank you, oh. And I hope some of that isn't true, I mean, all of it isn't true. I fear some of it might be, I don't know, obviously not going to work. I was concerned with Councilman Hinoz attributing this passage of, oh, thank you.
One that tastes his first sip is good.
I trust you, Bob.
What else do you need, I mean, you getting first-class services here, who are here?
I'm not here.
You need a refill, let me know, I'm drinking pot.
Will do.
Is your coffee in there?
Anyway, I was concerned with Chief, Councilman Hinoz's attribution of this legislation tonight that restricts independent vendors as being ethnically or motivated, as though there was some sort of discriminatory animus motivating it. And I'm not saying that it may not be the case, perhaps subconsciously, I don't know if you see, but, you know, I really, I find that hard, I really hope it isn't true, I really find it hard to believe, and I really fault Councilman Hinoz for raising that issue insofar as, insofar as, that he doesn't have a basis for really critiquing the legislation on the merits. There's plenty of merits to critique that legislation on. I think there were some points made that, hey, these guys are probably a ethnic minority, you know, African-American, Hispanic, fine, I'll buy that, that's the consequences of it, but by the same token, I also heard in that room there, some really interesting arguments, that you have established businessmen, that are, you know, nobody's fighting for the buck, we've got, especially here in Hammond, we have a slow economy, the businesses that are established and paying, and contributing to the tax base, maybe, maybe, they have an argument that says, hey, these guys are nip and away at my margin. You know, you give them marginal analysis on microeconomics, you don't understand, marginal analysis is, you know, what happens when I sell one more item? You know, the marginal revenues, you know, it deals with opportunity costs, investment strategies, et cetera, on the microeconomic level, now, I'm not going to get too technical here, what I'm saying is, you know, I hope that all of us living here in Hammond, we're here, white, black, brown, whatever you want to call it, you know, we've been here. To attribute that kind of animus, I think is unfounded, because otherwise, what would we be doing here? What would we be doing here if we had that kind of, I mean, we could go south, where it's, to be frank, quite frankly, it's a little more lily-white, okay, if you want to go that way, but we don't, I'm here, you're here, you're here. I just think it's a cheap shop, I think it's an electioneering shop. He might be a background for, what's his face, Oscar, Oscar Sanchez, and that's fine, but I just think it's a really, really cheap shop, Chico, you know, you made me right, and that's what I feared, what if he's right? You know, but, on the other hand, I felt that he resorted to that argument, because he couldn't beat it on the merits, because of what transpired in that room about these vendors, and, you know, and I took the heart of your amendments, I thought the May 1st to September, a little long, but then again, I don't know that much about street vendors, I find them to be part of the character of a place, you know what I mean? It's kind of like, kind of like street, you know what I mean, Chicago. I've seen street vendors in various parts of the country, Denver, Crown Point, what you name it, you know, San Diego, it has charm in a place. So, what I worry about is Kane and Abel syndrome, that start to merge in our politics here. I mean, you know, I'm not going to get up here and start talking about the brotherhood of men, but let's be quite frank, we do live together, we do have, I submit, more in common than we have that separates us. I worked in Gary, Indiana, that's a local years ago, in the living department for about, oh, 19 months. I was the only white man in there, okay? And let me tell you something, nobody gave a damn about my color. You know, they're talking about the same thing everybody else talks about, their mortgages, their income taxes, property taxes, can they get a new car, can their kids go to college? Yeah, that was, you want to be a minority, I was a minority. Nobody gave any, nobody gave any, I did my job, you know, I was gorgeous, now, I know I'm not going where that feels like. So, I don't know, I wanted to raise it up, Chico, it might be an issue that needs to be explored, I'm not saying you're wrong, I just don't think it was warranted this time out, and I could be wrong, I could be wrong, I'm going to admit that. I just wanted to raise it, but I did, thank you. Thanks for the thought.
Interesting subject. Very interesting, but I won't even go into that tonight, I'll leave that for another second. Can I get a motion to adjourn this meeting? Motion to adjourn?
Yes.
It's been motioned by Councilman Hinoz, and seconded by Councilman Hinoz, to tell you that we adjourn this meeting. All the favors you've applied by Saint Ida, prior to any days.